We'll go ahead and ask that we start the regular session of the city of Bloomington's council meeting on today, Monday, October 27th, and ask that you would all stand who can and join us in the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence. Clerk, we take roll call for attendance, please.
Uh, sit. Councilmember Kearns, here. Councilmember Mosley.
Here.
Councilmember Montney is absent. Councilmember Danenberger?
Here.
Councilmember Strazza?
Here.
Councilmember Hendricks?
Here.
Councilmember Warren?
Here.
Councilmember Lee?
Here.
Councilmember Scott?
Here.
Mayor Brady?
Here.
Thank you. Next, we move to the, um, our recognition and appointments. And I believe we have a presentation of the 2025 Beautification Award winners uh, from our Parks and Recreation Department. And if they would step forward and please go ahead and um, extend your news to the city.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council, City Manager Jurgens, this is a night that I always look forward to over the years. We have a lot of people in the community that take great pride in their properties and they make life better for everybody that lives here. Tonight, the Beautification Committee, Jeff Heineman, our staff liaison, is going to present the 225 Beautification Awards. So, thank you very much for giving us time to do that.
And actually, I just wanted to thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Mayor Jurgens, Deputy City Manager Tyus McLaughlin, and members of the council. Thank you for allowing Beautification Committee to have this time. Uh, they do a lot of hard work. They constantly are coming with the different ideas to beautify the city. And tonight, they get the opportunity of rewarding some individuals have done some outstanding work in their yards. And I would like to introduce Gina Lavazza and Daniel Freeburg to announce the awards.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us here. This is always an exciting time of the year. We do this once a year, but we get to recognize um, just the, the beauty that people put into their properties um, that make them stand out in the neighborhood. Uh, each year, we recognize outstanding members and this year, um, we want to recon- recognize, sorry. For, we have three residences and one business that had won an award today for the Beautification Committee. Um, I guess I will just get started with, um, well, let me introduce, sorry. Daniel here is going to be giving out the awards. We have certificates. And then every winner is going to be receiving an engraved um, stone, a garden stone. So, they will be getting those sometime this week. Um, let's just dive right in. Winners. Drumroll. I said I was going to do a drumroll. Sorry, it wasn't that good. Um, but our first winner is our business and that goes to Knee, Wendell Knee Pegging Greenhouse and Garden Center and 2010 Fox Creek. If you can come up. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. And do you want to call them up? I'll let you. They're going to introduce the new owners too.
Yeah.
First of all, I want to thank the city and everybody involved in this and uh, you guys are wonderful. Enjoyed working relationship we've had with the city for a lot of years. Uh, recently, we just sold our business and I want to recognize the new owners. Uh, the kids at Casey's Garden Shop, Derek and Kelsey, right there in the back.
Stand up, stand up so we can see you. There you are.
And uh,
Congratulations.
We're just very excited that they're going to carry on the tradition that's been uh, that we've been involved with in this community for so long. And I'm just tickled pink and couldn't be happier that they're going to be involved, future generations down the road. Thank you.
Thank you and congratulations.
Okay, and then our next winners, um, one of our residential winners. Um, it's for the address 1526 Julie Drive. Um, home to Aretha Malinowski and um, her hu- her late husband Jim Malinowski. So, on the decorative stone, we'll have both um, Aretha and Jim's name um, for them. And we would like to call Aretha up to congratulate her.
Congratulations, Mrs. Malinowski, and to all your family.
Okay, and our next winner is 915 South Mercer. And this is the home of Wanda Gray and her late husband Hal Gray.
Congratulations, Wanda. And, and to both those families, congratulations, especially in memory of their, their late husbands that uh, had did so much in their yard. So, yes, another round of applause for helping them steady, book, beautiful.
And then our last um, Beautification Award for this year is 603 South Morris. And that is the home of Dustin and Stephanie Stone. Um, they could not be here with us tonight, but we still want to give them a round of applause for the beautiful house.
Congratulations.
Okay, well, I just want to thank everybody, um, mayor and council members for taking the time to let us present our Beautification Award winners. I thank you and appreciate it.
Thank you very much for all your service on the committee and to all of you, thank you again. Next, we have a proclamation in recognition and honor of Mount Piscata Baptist Church 160th church anniversary. And we have a very nice turnout from church members and friends of the church. And at this time, I'm going to read the proclamation and then I'll ask Deacon Charles Halbert to come up for a few words uh, on behalf of the church. So, um, this is the mayoral proclamation in recognition and honor of Mount Piscata Baptist Church 160th church anniversary. For 160 years, Mount Piscata Baptist Church has stood as a pillar of hope, cultural enrichment, and love in the community. As an institution of faith proclaiming the gospel of Jesus Christ and serving as a beacon of light in times of both trial and triumphant. Since its founding in 1865, Mount Piscata Baptist Church has been a place where generations have come together for worship and spiritual growth. The church has journeyed from Walnut Street, excuse me, Water Street to 701 South Lee Street, and now to its current home at 801 West Market Street. Throughout these years, the congregation has shown a deep commitment to fellowship, uh, service. Notably, Mount Piscata Baptist Church has provided support to local families in need, truly modeling the commandment of Christ, to love your neighbor as yourself. Through the histor- the histories of time, this fellowship of faith has remained steadfast, bearing witness to the power of God's grace, strengthening families, uplifting the brokenhearted, and demonstrating a deep commitment to civic engagement, community outreach, and social progress. Standing as a beacon of hope, justice, and compassion in times of challenge and change. As we commemorate this milestone, we honor the faith of those forebearers who laid the foundation, the perseverance of those who passed forward through adversity, and the vision of today's members who carry the mission of Christ into the future. Therefore, be it resolved that we, the undersigned, do hereby proclaim this day as Mount Piscata Church Day in recognition of 160 years of faithful obedience to God and service to humanity. In witness, this proclamation is signed and scaled on this day in the year of our Lord 2025 in celebration of Mount Piscata Church 160th anniversary celebration. How about a nice round of applause? Thank you. And deacons, if you'd like to come forward. Charles, is my understanding you're going to be the spokesperson?
Yes, sir.
All right, that's, that's a very, very important role. And then we will present your proclamation as you come by for appreciation. Yes, sir.
I'd like to um, give thanks to um, Mayor Brady and the, and the council uh, for this great honor. Uh, Mount Piscata has existed for 160 years. Where we walk by faith and not by sight. We, we uh, love this city. And, and, and the city has, over the years, proved that they love Mount Piscata. In 2004, we began the process of, of building our, our new edifice. And there were certain things that uh, we needed some uh, adjustments to uh, some of the roofs. And we, we came to the city and then, and they were gracious uh, at, at all times. Uh, so on behalf of Mount Piscata and our pastor, uh, Timothy Mark Harris, Dr. Timothy Mark Harris, we, 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 we thank you for this, this honor. And, and we're, we're uh, eternally, we will be eternally grateful for the, for, for the recognition. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have you gentlemen like to come forward? Willie? Charles, if you'd like to come forward with your other deacons so we can present the resolution proclamation to you. And if you want to say also thank you and congratulate, receive congratulations from the council as well.
You're right. There we go. Thank you. I already covered you. Do it again. Take care. John, thank you.
Congratulations. Next, we're going to move to uh, public comment. Clerk, if there have been requests made by individuals who would like to uh, present here at public comment tonight.
Yes, so we had one emailed public comment, Brandon Gray, whose uh, comments were forwarded to council.
Okay.
And then we have two individuals in person who'd like to speak. If you could read your statement.
Great. Ladies and gentlemen, um, public comment is an opportunity for speakers to provide their views and feedback to the city council. It's also an opportunity for the city council to listen in here, diverse points of view. To maximize the impact of public comment and show respect for the expression of all viewers, speaker, speakers should maintain civility and focus on city issues. Speakers must identify themselves for the record, but are not required to give their address. Each speaker is given the floor for three minutes and the council does not respond or engage in debate. Any speaker that engages in threatening disorderly behavior uh, will be deemed out of order and their time will be ceased. First speaker?
First speaker is Chris Mitchell.
Good evenings. It's the first time I've ever been here. I don't know what this is really about, but I was told to come here and complain. I live at 1112 Western. I've been living there for six years. Citizen of Bloomington my whole life. Um, recently kind of ran into a problem with water. Uh, water company. Um, the water got shut off oh, about three years ago. I've been kind of working on the house, went through a separation. Hadn't, nobody been living in the home. And then just this reoccurring bill just kept getting bigger and bigger. Now it's almost $5,000. And in this meantime, they replaced meters. They've put work orders in to replace the curb shut-off valve. And now it's still just a, a huge bill that uh, said that I owe when the city property has, has been uh, faulty for quite some time. And the problem with the meter is, or the problem with the curb valve is, is that one technician would come by and shut it off. A week later, or two weeks later, they'd get, they'd get something that says the water's on, so they'd turn, turn the, again. And that would turn the water on in the house because the curb valve was bad. So, three times, they flooded my house. Because I'm not a plumber. I don't, you know, working on my house. And uh, so three times. So, I put in a, a uh, request to kind of take care of some of this and figure out what's going on. Through everybody I've talked to, I've, I've text people, I've called people, I've, everybody is, I mean, mo- most account, most of the people that I've talked to, it says, not my problem. You have to speak with so-and-so. And you go to them, not my problem. And then all of a sudden, we think we got it figured out today. Came up here to pay the bill. And I get down there and it's 3,000, they said they were going to take out all the, all the charges, late charges, anything like that. I said, oh, it's not too bad. So, I didn't know what the bill would probably be. I figured a couple thousand dollars. And uh, so I was willing to pay it. And I get up here and it's almost $4,000 in just water usage. When nobody living there. You know, and somebody's going to say that there's not a problem with some, some, something somewhere. You know, I mean, I got pictures of my basement flooded, you know, but it's just somebody else will help you tomorrow. So, just need some help. What else to do?
Thank you.
Yeah. Is there, I mean, like, somebody in my ward or something? I mean, is there a way to, to get some ideas or from any council?
We're just taking the comments and then we'll move forward from that, but thank you very much. Next speaker?
Next up, we have David Bush.
Hello. Um, I wanted to bring to your attention an issue.
Put the microphone down just a little. There you go.
There we go, yeah. I just wanted to bring to the council's attention an issue I've been having with the bus. Um, as you can see, I have some mobility issues. I am able to, to walk, but I'm supposed to avoid it to help my, help my feet heal and so on and so forth. And I use a knee scooter occasionally. Um, there, the bus has been moved from where they usually stop at Front Street to, to a different street because there's construction going on, which is understandable, of course. But um, on their, on, and uh, they stop on Roosevelt just behind the, the uh, what is it called now? Yeah, behind the, the uh, the arena there that they hold all those things in. There's Roosevelt and they were stopping on Jefferson, which is fine. But then they were forced to move from Jefferson because they're doing construction there also. That second block of Roosevelt that they stop on is not really possible for someone in a mobility device to navigate. There are, there are slopes of about 30 degrees on the sidewalk. There are posts in the way. There's tons of gravel everywhere. There's broken areas. So, I mean, if you're in a walker, it's just not navigable. If, you know, I can, like I said, I can walk for a few steps if I have to. But, you know, it's, then I have to nav- I have to navigate that knee scooter around on all that broken stuff and gravel and so on. So, and, and when winter comes, you know, there'll be, there'll be snow, possibly ice all over that. It'll be har- even harder to navigate. So, uh, I just wanted to bring that to your attention. I think, I think that's, that there's, they should be moved somewhere where it's, it's more possible for someone with mobility concerns to navigate. So, they don't have to go out in the middle of the street in order to catch the bus because obviously that's dangerous. So, yeah. Yeah, thank you. I, I do have pictures, but uh, we weren't able to get them printed in time for the meeting. So, I can come back in two weeks and, and show them around so you can see what I'm talking about.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Are there other?
That's all the public comment we have tonight.
Thank you very much. Um, next, we'll move to the consent agenda. And under the consent agenda items that are listed, are there members of the council that wish to have an item polled from the congenis- consent agenda and discussed further after the vote?
I'll just make a motion to approve, seeing them.
Motion by member Hendricks, seconded by member Scott. And if you would go ahead and take the vote, please. Clerk?
Vote's open. Vote's open. Councilmember Danenberger, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion passes, no needs to announce.
Thank you very much. Motion carries unanimously and we'll move on then from the consent agenda to the regular agenda. And under number eight, item A, uh, presentation of the special commission for safe communities, final report. And recommend, it will be presented by Dr. Scott Denton, who chairs the special commission for safe communities. And city manager Jurgens, is there any other comments you'd like to make? Then we'd ask for Dr. Denton. If you are ready to present, sir.
Thank you, AM. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, um, council for letting us present our report. It was two years of hard work. It's gone by really quickly. We were surprised how fast it went by. Um, there is a PowerPoint that I'm going to go through. I'd like to thank Ryan Bertram, who's probably hiding in the back. He's, he's our writer, our author. If you want to stand up, Ryan. There he is. He, uh, he is, he's the, the, the author or our, or our Thomas Jefferson basically for this report. So I want to, uh, special recognition for him. All right, next slide, please. So this is our mission. We're very careful to stay within guidelines. We stay within our rails. We did not violate any constitutional amendments or the second amendment. Uh, we made no recommendations in that regard. Um, as you can see on the, on the, um, the upper, the board, we had three specific areas that we were, we were tasked by you, the council, to do, and I think we have, we have done that. We worked, we were to collect, evaluate and assess data on gun violence and weapons violations within the Bloomington area. Number two, identify patterns and underline causes of gun violence and weapons violations in the Bloomington area. And then third, provide specific recommendations about how the city might address identified issues. And when we did that, we looked specifically at prevention. How are we going, going to try to prevent gun violence? Once a trigger is pulled or someone is shot, uh, we considered that a failure. So we did not, we did not go into that. That is a criminal justice issue. And there are other councils in the county and the city that deal with that and Chief Veerman and his, his department. All right, next slide. Again, this is two years of work. We're putting into a, a several minutes, so I hope it, I hope it doesn't go too fast. So our recommendations, this is an introduction to our recommendations. So over the past two years, we have done a tremendous amount of work. We listened to everyone in the committee and the community that would, um, that would, that would talk to us. We invited many, many people. Many of them stepped up, gave us their perspectives, and we tried to collect that in the, the 29-page report that I believe you all have. So that's a, that, I think that's a tremendous thing for us, for us to have accomplished. So our, as you can see on the, on the screen, um, gun violence takes many forms. It's an interlinked web. If it was an easy thing to solve, it would have been solved a long time before we came along or before you asked us to do this. Most deaths unfortunately are for, from suicidal deaths in our community. Uh, there are also shootings that were not premeditated. These are spontaneous acts, whether from suicide or accidental or homicidal violence. Well, we just, we determined that many of the shooters demonstrate warning signs beforehand. There were, there was things that people could pick up on that happened beforehand, especially with suicide or inappropriate access to guns. Uh, we found out that there were people in the community that knew people had inappropriate guns and they, um, they were kind of silent about it. Didn't say, want to say anything. So one of the things we wanted to look at or want to note, bring to attention was inappropriate access to guns. Um, and there were multiple of things we could facilitate to do that in our report. So the next slide, please. So we have eight recommendations. They're, they're interlinked. I consider them to be interwoven. The first one, uh, basically is, um, expand community group collaboration. We talked to a lot of people. There'd be a slide coming up that talks, that mentions all those people. Those people are, are integral if you're going to prevent gun violence in Bloomington. We recommend that there be a task force or a group similar to the, we call it the SC2. This is the special commission for safe communities. Even though it's called safe communities, it was your, your, your mandate to us was look at gun violence. So integrating either a task force or our safe communities commission into something else to monitor what's going on. Cause things go up and down as we found out. Um, there are multiple councils, agencies within not just the city of Bloomington, but the county. The county has also, uh, criminal justice organizations and normal and other outlined communities. We looked at trying to coordinate prevention with these people and improve data collection, um, for number one. For number two, promote gun security. Uh, we, we found that the city of Bloomington through the police department has done an excellent job of this and we think it should continue, if not expand. Secure gun storage education, increase lock, gun lock distribution, uh, safe giveaways for guns, uh, we'll talk about in a minute. Buyback programs have, have been worked. Um, and then something that came to our attention during the commission was a firearm, firearms owner identification card revocation enforcement. There was a large amount of people who had their FOID cards revoked and they never give up their guns. There's no enforcement lanes to do that. It's voluntary. Um, gathering youth, youth perspectives is critical because, um, we found out that most, um, gun violence is committed by youth or youth have guns. We've seen that in surrounding communities more than Bloomington normal, which is fortunate for us. But, um, the high school kids know if an, if a high, another high school kid has a gun or not, they'd know that. And we've got organizations that work in the schools that need their support. Um, we want to try to interrupt that. Supporting suicide prevention. Um, the veterans do an excellent job of looking out for each other. They have a support group where they are, monitor each other. They can look out for each other. Who's, who's having trouble? That's through the court system. We wanted to, we recommended targeting middle-aged males. Um, they're the highest demographic for committing suicide. They have access to guns. They, whenever their guns are taken away by family members, they often don't give them all away. So there, that happens too. The nine eight eight, the nine eight eight crisis lifeline is, is critical. Um, and then the veterans, you know, if we could follow a veteran's model and expand that to the city, that would be, that would be wonderful. Uh, domestic violence programs, number five. Uh, we've had incidents of domestic violence that turned out horribly wrong and with, with violence and gunshots. Uh, protective order enforcements and accountability. We heard from a lot of people that say that that is a difficult program. They will, they will, or different thing to enforce. They will show up at a situation where domestic violence is occurring and then it goes back and forth and it's hard to enforce. The Bloomington Police Department, um, expressed a lot of frustration in trying to get these moved forward only to have, um, family issues get in the way of that. Multi, multidisciplinary working groups, I'll mention in a minute. Um, we're good with that. Uh, school programming, Project Oz, I want to, I I want to really make a focus on. They are in the schools. They know what, what kids are having trouble with at home. They know what kids having trouble with guns. Restorative justice was something I knew nothing about before I started this. I think it's, it's picking up speed. It's, it's a way to prevent further violence. If, if a conflict has occurred or a wrong has occurred, it's a way to remedy that without, um, especially like incarceration if it's not needed. Um, there's something called social emotional learning curricula in the high schools and grade schools, which is, I think is critical. If you have, you didn't know about that, that's something you can learn about. I learned about it myself. It's a way to get kids to learn how to deal with their emotions and feelings and not just pick up a gun or fire a gun. Those are just some alternatives to punitive disciplinary approaches. Um, invent, investing in mental health programs. They've heard a lot about that through the county and the city and other, all those cities. Uh, mental health, again, feeds back into other things. It feeds back into suicide. It feeds back into dealing with, um, conflicts and altercations. There are a lot of mental health, um, organizations exist in Bloomington normal and we could really use them, um, their assistance and we can get their voices. Number eight is the, the will of the, the commission. We took a vote on this. Um, we, we asked that the special commission for safe communities, uh, uh, continue. It was a two-year program. It is expired. Um, so if you'd like to continue that, that would be up to you. I found it, it was a good way to get updated gun violence information. So every month, Bloomington police through Assistant Chief Veerman would come to our commission and tell us what happened the month before, and that would get out in the press. So things are going up or down, which, uh, which is, which things, actually gunshots are going down, which we have figured out. So our last updates, um, in that, in that area, um, actually in 2025, we've had, uh, as of today, we've had 21 confirmed shots fired in 2025. Uh, nine people have been shot and five killed by gunfire, which is down. Uh, the average is actually much less than that. Um, so we were, last year we were, 37 gunshots were fired. Um, and four people were, were shot, but no deaths last year. So that's, that's our eight recommendations and you can, you can do with them as you please. So next slide, please. So our report contents, it's 29 pages. It's a lot of information. Uh, you can't go over it all here. We recommend that it may be made public. I know you all have it. Um, so it's up to you, but there are, there, it basically backs up all those eight recommendations. So it's our two years of minutes and notes put into 29-page report. Um, they're in graphs and charts. It shows the scope of the problem. Bloomington and nationally, it's a lot of good information, um, going forward. So I would, um, you can see that how it's broken down and gun violence in areas, uh, domestic violence, gun-based suicides, uh, youth in schools, data tools we used. And then patterns, what are the patterns that are occurring? And then basically the appendices that show again, uh, basis for our data. And a, a nice reference in a URL index, you can click and, and get to those documents. The next one, I'll, that's what I mentioned before. These are the, the next slide, please. The next slide is everyone that came and talked to us and they were very sincere, um, and talked to us about what they're, they saw as their problem in their, their place of the world. It's a large elephant and everybody has their own part of the elephant that they see and they deal with. So all of those people you see, um, from Illinois State University, Dr. Beecher, I won't list them all. You can see them. But everyone through Youth and Family Solutions, the school districts, Moms Demand Action, uh, the Bloomington Police Department, Veterans Assistance, um, Project Oz, the Veterans Treatment Council was, was really good, I thought. Um, I want to give a special, um, thank you to Assistant Chief Veerman. He was there every meeting. He was guiding us. He was telling us, um, basically what was going on in the community. And then the coroner Yoder gave us the suicide statistics for McLean County and talked to us about who's at risk and what she sees in her office. And the next slide, please. Uh, these are the commission members. I'd like to recognize them all. They, they showed up for two years every fourth Thursday. Um, and did this report. This is all, this is a group effort. I'm just up here talking, but they, you know, I just represent them, but they did this. Kevin Kraschner, Caitlin Selman, Kathy Lust, Sierra Aiden, Elizabeth Germin, uh, chief, Assistant Chief Veerman, Robert Harris, Ryan Bertrand, uh, Timothy Harris, I think is from Mount Pishka, if I'm not mistaken, and myself. Those are the commission members. And we were very, felt very privileged and we took this very seriously to get this report to you on time. And then finally, the next slide, um, resources and questions. So our last recommendation was to continue it, even though we know it might not happen. Um, but we did recommend a task force just in case as a backstop. But, um, there's ways to, you know, there's, we think there's number one is in the middle, continue the commission's progress. There should be a way to monitor and, and do this. The eight, the recommendations going forward should be monitored or, or a way to monitor the progress. We should also want to make this report public. We think it has a lot of good information. It's 29 pages of hard, dense data. We didn't put anything in there that we didn't think was essential. So it's, it's very critical. So, and we, and we look at this as enhancing the community's safety. So you call this the special commission for safe communities, even though it's guns. We want to live in a safe community. We want, you know, we saw the, the nice homes, you know, Mount Pishka. We want it, this to be a wonderful place where we all live and, and thrive. You know, um, so by reducing gun violence, which we saw as one shot creates a point of water with multiple ripples rippling out. And so we saw that in multiple incidents that occurred over the two years where one gun violence incident would ripple out in the community and cause a lot of a discussion and what can we do about it? And I think we've given you a, basically a roadmap for that. Um, and that's, uh, that's my presentation. Again, these are the wonderful people that worked. I know Brian's hiding in the back, um, or, Orion's hiding in the back. But, um, if you have any questions, I think we would all be welcome to take those. Thank you for your, your kind attention.
Thank you, Dr. Denton. And for someone who's worked with you for many, many years, I know, uh, your dedication to this and to your committee, you've obviously named them all and thanked them to the police department, named them and thanked them. And we all echo all those comments and all those who testified, um, in particular. So I also wanted to make mention to member, um, Molly Ward, who has been instrumental in this, um, setting up this committee and, and, and before, um, for last couple of years at least, if not before then. Uh, but we want to say thank you to member Ward for persevering and seeing this through and being so instrumental as well, as well as any other council members, uh, that were there, uh, either now or at that time. So with that, I think there would be fitting for those who have questions from the council or comments, uh, that we start with member Ward and, um, move forward from there. So member Ward.
Thank you. Um, I just want to reiterate that this, um, has actually been a fulfillment of a request that was made to me personally, but, but I think to various council members over the years, it dates back at least four, maybe five years. To me, constituents who came to me saying, I'm, I'm going to move out of this community because things are getting out of hand. We got to do something. And that prompted me to, to say, let's try to take a comprehensive look at gun violence in our community and get a sense of what, what the problem is, um, what the source of the violence is, what the scope of it is, what, what can experts who know stuff about stuff tell us to do about it? And so, um, this is the fulfillment of that process that actually began at least four years ago. And I really just want, I can't say enough how grateful and, and, um, thankful I am at this commission, the, the members. And I think that, that there are multiple folks sitting in the back. If you could maybe wave or, yeah, people who have been on this commission and, and among the, the members that were listed there, there also were, um, were a couple of previous members, um, from Project Oz, Jay, um, blanking, Shannon and, um, Aaron Stein, Klein, excuse me, Aaron Klein, who, who lived out in the, who lives out in the county. And, and I guess that's a point that I'm wanting to make is that this wasn't just a Bloomington effort. There are people who, although the, the town and the county didn't formally put forward, um, members, there were people who live in the town and people who, who live in the county who participated in this. And I just can't say thank you enough to all of you for your dedication and your thoroughness. You fulfilled this mandate, right? The mandate was to do this in two years, to dig deep into this. And you, you have fulfilled that in a timely way, um, in ways that I think many, many other, um, efforts don't, often don't quite get that, that amount of, of traction and energy that I saw from, from you all. So thank you for that. This is a comprehensive report, right? It's, it's 29 pages long. There's a lot of stuff in this. And one council meeting, right? One discussion is not going to do justice to all of this. And I, I want to, want to lift up to my fellow council members that, that we need to take it at least as seriously as these people who have volunteered their time, right? One staff member, Assistant Chief Veerman, thank you. But one staff member, right? Everybody else was volunteering, taking time out of their workday. These meetings were Thursday afternoons and, and showing up time after time. We need to give it at least as much effort as they have. I would really love to see us as a council, give voice to some of the areas that, that energize us the most. And then ask staff to come back with language that we can take action on. I, I think for my part, the number one thing is to, is to follow that recommendation that the special commission itself made. And frankly, to me, that's as simple as losing the word special and changing the, the end, end date. And making it the commission for safe communities and making it a permanent, um, commission that we, we focus on. But I would love to hear what other people have to say about this and, um, And yeah, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Member Mosley.
Yeah, I'd like to thank you all for the work as well. And I kind of want to echo what councilperson Ward just said too is, but I'm going to ask it with the question, right? How do we champion this? I know you, you know, suggested, Dr. Denton, that we move this forward and you propose a task force. Is it that the task force that we, if we can form that, would take this and then try to prioritize how we attack these eight metrics? Or what would you recommend?
Yes. I I would recommend, you know, our, the council, the commission's recommendation was to continue that this this commission, maybe not as special as you mentioned, but as a commission. And if that didn't, if that wasn't something that you all wanted to do, then then a task force would be acceptable. But but I think we do need to go forward, at least monitor what's going on. And that way we can, you know, continue the momentum. And we've given you these these eight things to do with a lot of data. And then we can, you know, whoever you point, however you go forward with this, that group could go forward and do this. Does anybody else have any comments on that? I think I think that's what we wanted. We wanted to have to, we wanted a commission.
And then my next question, and I'll be brief too, is is two questions. It was one regarding some of the data that you had and you mentioned like the data is that even as far as today, right? With five death fatalities based on gun use. I noticed that the shots fired have come down, right? If we just look at twenty 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 two and that data. But it seems like we we had a good year last year with no fatalities in the previous year, but now it's spiking again. Is there anything towards the data that is, is that just us? Or is it all communities that you're seeing that the intent is more prevalent now or?
One thing with that that data is it's one incident, I think, was a triple homicide.
Okay.
That kind of shot those numbers up. I don't know that we're we're necessarily correlating with other communities around us. I think mostly the communities around us are experiencing higher propensity for gun violence than what we are. That being said, any any shots fired or or gun violence is bad in a community, right?
And then my last question was just as I think of us too, is what can we do to en- enable, like you mentioned in here, like with the FOIA cards that are revoked? Are there steps that we can take? Is that additional resources that you need? And what actions can you actually take to actually acquire those expired, those revoked FOIA cards? Or do we just wait for expiration or something?
So yeah, I'll just take this real quick. But yeah, the the police have a difficult thing. It's it's extremely difficult and dangerous to take a gun away from someone who doesn't want to give it away. And then, you know, I don't, I don't want Chief Veerman or his his group, you know, or to to go in and and put themselves in harm way. But yeah, there's got to be a way that people who have, it's been deemed that their guns need to be taken away. We need to find a way to do that other than voluntary. And I don't, I don't have the answer. But but we, I I I will let Chief Veerman, is there a grant? I think there's a grant that they're working on.
We currently have a grant that's that's trying to address this kind of piecemeal. So we just started that. I don't really have any data or information on it, but it's one of those things where risk and reward kind of come into play. And, you know, obviously knocking on somebody's door, telling them we're going to take their guns away isn't popular. So, you know, getting people to take them away voluntarily in a safe manner for us is kind of paramount.
Member Scott.
Thank you. Thank you so much for this work. I'd like to echo my my fellow council members and just how impressive and how massive this is. A couple of things were were stood out to me as fascinating, but just the the average age of a victim being eighteen years old, that's average. That's, you know, fifty percent or so less is just was just fascinating. And just, it goes to show just how important the specific research is and the specific research to our area. And I've said this before and other folks on this council know that we lost my brother to to suicide in in Woodford County a couple of years ago. So I really appreciate that work and I'm certainly excited about, as others have said, the potential of what specific things that we can do. I'm also excited just by the fact that this was, I mean, it's the massive amount of groups that you had on here and just a a place for those relationships to be maintained. Specifically, it works like, you know, mentioned of restorative justice. And I've learned a lot about restorative justice lately from from teachers and from officers. And just what, again, what what can we do to encourage that that kind of work in those kind of relationships? But my one question is, I'm excited about the idea of this continuing, the process of this. Was it slow to get going? Or were these relationships, you know, just built on day one? I'm thinking about just just all the good work that has been done and now just snowballing into a potential future work. But could you speak a little bit on that process?
Sure. So once we got over to the administrative appointments, because the mayor appointed all of us, prior mayor, once that, once that we got over that and we were all sworn in, I think it just, it just took off like a rocket. Because people actually wanted to talk to us and all the commission members sitting behind me and to my right, I mean, they had ideas. We want this person to talk to us. We like this person to talk to us. And everyone came enthusiastic. They had PowerPoints. They told us what they wanted, what they needed to do this. And I I think all those people we listed on that PowerPoint would love to keep talking to you through through either a commission or some other task force, if that's not, if you don't want a commission. But I think they would, they, and we need to coordinate them. They all were kind of, I don't want to say siloed, but it's kind of close. They overlapped very minimally. So if we can get them all in one room together or have a a a commission that deals with them constantly, that would be a tremendous step forward, I think.
Member Hendricks.
Yeah, I'll keep my comments really brief because really it's just echoing some of my colleagues here. But I also want to extend and and commend you on the on the good work that you did and and, you know, the so much information that you've presented to us that you're right, there's a lot to go through and and I look forward to us digging more into that. I also want to extend my appreciation to Member Ward. This was one of the first things that we voted on when my class of of council members got on here. And we knew that we had that support through our council. And so I appreciate, you know, you persevering through that and making this come into fruition. You know, one of the things that we hear often is that commissions have a hard time meeting quorums. And from my knowledge of all the meetings for two years, I think maybe one you didn't meet quorum and maybe one was a working meeting that everybody didn't necessarily need to come to, but to build this presentation. And that is really unheard of for many of our commissions. So, you know, I'm excited about a lot of the the information you have here related to getting youth involvement. As a teacher myself, I think that's so crucial, building those community partnerships even stronger. And I think based on the commitment that you as a commission have shown through your dedication to this work and to being there, you know, I just want to lend my voice in support of seeing that this commission drop the special, even though it is special and important, but become a permanent committee of the city.
Other members? Member Kermes.
Yes, thank you. Again, thank you all for all the hard work that you put into this. I'm excited that we are spending the time talking about it tonight. So thanks, Councilmember Ward and everyone else who was involved. I just wanted to make a quick couple of things that struck me as well, because one is that, yes, I am very much supporting and continuing this work. I think one of the biggest takeaways that I thought were exactly what you said is wondering if organizations in town that would have something, would have expertise and the bandwidth to take on some of these initiatives and how much they were working together. It makes me think of like the way the community came together with the housing issue, where those entities wanted to break down those silos and get together and like coordinate some of the work that they're doing. And so I I see that as an opportunity to to have something along that lines with like the continuum of care or in other communities, they have like human services councils, but something that would help align the services that are being offered, you know, maybe there's grant opportunities or maybe there's ways that they can leverage each other's work. And so that is something that I think we should continue to explore. I also wanted to highlight that I do agree like better data collection would be great. I know from my work that, you know, there are lots of domestic violence cases that get reported to the cops, but there are probably just as many or more that never get reported to to the police or maybe on a civil level. And so the cops aren't necessarily involved. And so I'm sure there's tons more data that we could collect to kind of get a better understanding of how that impacts our community members. So yeah, I I look forward to all of us digging more into this and thank you again for your work.
Other members? Comments? Member Ward.
Well, I mean, I'm hearing from what my fellows have said, it sounds like there's pretty close to a consensus that this work needs to continue. And I, for one, would like to encourage city staff to and and the mayor to schedule this again for some committees of the whole and bring us back some language in pretty short order to to continue the commission as a first start. And I would be happy to work to come up with some language like that. But yeah, I just want to give voice to that so that we don't just leave this hanging and it becomes something that it's like, thanks for your work. And now it sits on a shelf, because I think it's something that needs to continue. And I'm not seeing anybody shaking their head no.
I think, thank you very much to all of you for your comments. I think there's, there's consensus here that moving forward with all the information and the good report and depth report and so many people involved. So with that, what I'm hearing and anyone else feel free to share your opinions, while we're not voting on anything specific right now. But the future of all this hard work needs to continue on into the future of what we can do from a council. And that has been suggested, possibly not only staff and coming back with some of the recommendations. If there's an action that can be taken in that respect, the council can do. But more immediate, maybe going to the next committee of a whole, why you all think about other ways in which you would like to try and see that this report and the information moves forward and how the committee in some way, shape or form can continue to benefit all of us and all the citizens of Bloomington. So if that sounds like a pathway that we all agree on, then that's what we'll do. If there's any other members who have any other direction or ideas they want to share right now, we want to all keep it moving forward. It sounds obvious to me. And if there's not anyone else that wants to speak to it, then we will move forward with those ideas, work with staff and come back to a committee of a whole and get some more specifics and how we can move forward and continue the good work. And to all of you, once again, thank you very much. And how about from the council to all of you, thank you very much for all your hard work. We're indebted to you and so is Bloomington. Thank you. Thank you again for the presentation and all the hard work.
Thank you very much.
With that being said, if there's not any other comments, we're going to move forward, I think, next to our finance director's report. So far, Director would like to go ahead with the report. Director Rathburn.
Thank you. Thank you for being here.
My pleasure. So tonight, September financial summary, five months in, forty two percent of the year. Again, as I've mentioned, every month into this current fiscal year, we're, it's still preliminary, very much so. We only have three months of sales taxes. I'm going to do a quick update of the general fund and the enterprise funds. But I really, general fund financials, but I really want to spend a little bit of time, not too much time, on talking about what the general fund entails, what expenditures it covers, the departments, the functions it provides within the budget. There's been a lot of discussion related to the general fund, related to the grocery tax and the needs there. So we just wanted to kind of highlight what the general fund, we talk about it all the time, what does it actually pay for? Next slide, please. So first, first to start, the major tax revenues, they're trending as they were last month. I've got a couple of line items highlighted. First, the the sales tax are still benefiting and hopefully will continue to benefit from the changes in legislative legislation related to online sales. So between home rule and state, roughly up about $2 million year to date. That's being somewhat offset by local tax, local use tax. That's the category that a lot of these online retailers were remitting, just the the basic state level taxes. But with the legislative change, they have to collect our home rule and I think it passed a wider net as well. Replacement tax is it's kind of in the light gray, bluish down there near the bottom. We're $222,000 under year to date. The interesting thing there, I mentioned last month, was Department of Revenue and IML, Illinois Municipal League, they both do projections on that category. And they are projecting that we should see the revenues that we did last year. So we budgeted this year approximately the same as what we realized in FY twenty five, so approximately 2.6 million. So it's going to have to, we're going to have to see some rebounding there related to that. There's still some clawbacks going on related to the overfunding. I wanted to emphasize that back in FY twenty three, we are at 6.3 million roughly versus our 2.6 million dollars budgeted here. We're down, you know, almost $4 million from the height of the replacement tax back in FY twenty three. So that's, that's been quite a downturn. And then one last item that I didn't highlight, but I want to just touch on quickly, the income tax line. You can see we're we're slightly under 104,000. That's really not that much based on a $14 million budget. But there has been some information in the media lately related to the state budget and the concerns related to corporate income taxes and some of the the changes in tax law at the federal level and how that could impact. There's concern at the state level, especially related to those corporate income taxes, and that's going to impact here at us here at the city. So we're going to be watching that line item. And then just the last thing, you know, jumping to the bottom there, still, you know, $1.6 million ahead a year to date related to these tax revenues, these major tax revenues. Again, most of that related to the online sales tax. Next slide, please. This is the general fund income statement, going to whiz right through this. Nothing major to address here, pretty much captured most of it in the the major tax update. Last month, I believe it was last month, we were a little, we were quite a bit under in charges for services revenues. We do have some timing related to information we get related to ambulance fees. There's some seasonality, et cetera, in our, in all of our, a lot of our funds across the city. So some of these kind of deviate up and down during the year. But again, the tax revenues was the primary driver of general fund revenues. Next slide, please. And general fund expenditures also trending. You can see, you know, that we're forty two percent through the year. Salaries and benefits are right at that forty, forty two percent mark. That can vary, you know, we have seasonality in the summer related to parks and in the winter we have snow and ice, but that's tracking pretty well. Other intergovernmental expenses a little above is 51%. That's primarily related to the payment to public safety pensions, which is mostly based on property taxes. And most of the property taxes are in for the year to date. So we've paid those on to the pension fund. So that's why that that's a little accelerated at this point. And then the last thing, under the, under the year to date actual column, we are projecting the unassigned reserve balance for the general fund to end FY twenty five at approximately $41 million. So again, a healthy reserve balance for FY twenty six. We did allocate $3.3 million to start the budget, primarily related to the front and center project. And then we've amended the budget by $10.3 million for downtown streetscape. So between those two, that's approximately a $16 million use of reserves during the current fiscal year. Next slide, please. So I rushed through those. I want to spend a little bit of time here, not not to bore everyone, but this is perspective on the general fund. We've used this exhibit in the past during the the budget cycle. It's been expanded a little bit, but it really just highlights categorically where the $137 million in expenditures goes to and what the proportional allocation across those departments. The way this exhibit is laid out, next time we I present it, we're going to put in another column that shows the fee revenue that these departments generate right now, it's just showing the net. So I'm just going, I'm going to skip a few lines, for example, and then I'm going to go back to the top. So for example, public safety has a total expenditure budget of 69, almost $70 million for the year. Yet the expenditures net of external fee revenue, so we're not including any allocations or any tax revenues. These are just external charge fees. And then you can see the the reference here is ambulance, towing, resource officers, those last two being for the PD, ambulance being for the fire. So about $9 million in fee revenue generated by the public safety departments. So that that's the way the exhibits laid out. Another large category department that generates a lot of fees is parks. So if you jump down So if you jump down, two-thirds of the way down the the exhibit, you can see 12.6 million dollars in parks expenditures. But the net expenditures after their fees of about 3.4 million is 9.2. So going back to the top, administration. We did lump this all together. It included IT, utility billing and everything, but I broke out a couple of line items. But just admin is 6.9 million. We do have, there are revenue sources, ordinance violations, et cetera. Finance, legal, administration, HR, all these departments also support a lot, all the other funds as well. Now, there are also are some allocations, but the point I wanted to make is like when you have a variable activity, like the water fund, we're doing, you know, generational water distribution plan that causes a lot of extra work and processes within the other departments. For example, myself, I spent a lot of time working on the $33 million bond raising that we did earlier this spring. So that those departments don't just impact the general fund as far as the efforts that they put forth. They impact a lot of other funds as well. Like HR, they they do the payroll for the library, but we don't charge, the general fund does not charge the library for anything. A utility billing, collections slash the hub, 1.5 million dollars. We do allocate a significant amount of that to the enterprise funds. IT, information technology, so it's a new world, cybersecurity threats. We we have dedicated staff within the IT department to support public safety because all the technology they use. Of that 7.6 million, most of mine notes out to the right are related to revenue. But I just wanted to highlight, we have 4.6 million dollars just really, just related to software and hardware expenditures for the IT department. So significant expenditures there, you know, a lot of it's our ERP system. There's a lot of software utilized around the, around the city. Public safety, this number includes all the pension expense. So we have almost $16 million in public safety pensions, part of it is catch-up, you know, to be transparent for prior years. And then 60.9 million dollars net after the revenues generated. Sorry to go through each one of these, but I I think it's important to understand like what the general fund supports. Community impact, 5.4 million. Local support, so this is kind of a line item that gets lost. The city supports a lot of other economic entities, you know, generating entities, CVV, EDC, SBDC, the museum. So we have over half million dollars that's being supported there. The economic development agreements and rebates, things come before councils such as the State Farm Building. And we we just, there's a decision made to support the developer in that, that's supported by the general fund. So that's, right now, we have in FY twenty-six, over a half million dollars budgeted for that. Building maintenance, facilities, the government center, the building that we're in right here, we share the cost of this building with the county. It's a significant cost to the city, parking garages, fleet maintenance, there's a lot of expenditures there. Public works and engineering, admin and engineering, 4.9 million dollars. So this is similar to the admin line in that I'll just highlight engineering. The engineering team are very instrumental in the streets and sidewalks, asphalt and concrete fund. And there are no allocations as they go to that fund expenditure-wise from the general fund. So all of our engineers that are working on development of the streets plan, the general fund is covering those costs. Street maintenance, there there is actually just a lot of repair work that's done by the general fund, so it's not resurfacing. It's not the sidewalk programs, you know, that eight million that we've budgeted for FY twenty-six. This is just repairs through the, during the year, 4.9 million, snow and ice removal, 1 million, parks and rec, I mentioned. Arts and entertainment, this is just the BCPA. The BCPA is in the general fund. The arena is an enterprise fund. It was decided upon by the auditors. Within this cost is also, there's still a bond related to, bond payments related to improvements on the BCPA of about 560,000. So that's part of that expenditure, but we allocate sales tax directly to that department to pay for that. So the 1.4 million is really the net expenditure for the BCPA after event revenues. It's doing well, costs a lot to maintain that building, et cetera. And then public transportation, McLean County Health, these are other entities that we're supporting within the city. So one point, almost $8 million for for connect transit. County Health, we we allocate 10% of our home rule taxes to the county mental health. So as our online activity is going up, this this expenditure line will go up as well. And then the our capital improvement fund, this this covers everything from major repairs to buildings to parks, playgrounds, et cetera. That that transfer, all those dollars come from the general fund. That transfer right there is is just for the front and center project. We had reserves in the capital improvement fund from projects that weren't executed in prior years that were also funding additional projects for FY twenty-six. So we're not just doing front and center in the in the capital improvement fund. But that's where all the dollars come from for the capital improvements, the general capital improvements that aren't related to water and sewer and storm in the in the arena. And then last but not least, I guess, is are the enterprise fund subsidy transfers. The general fund provides flexibility really in supporting those enterprise funds that that can't break even on their own. And the arena is the example of that, it's just, it it always needs a subsidy. And sometimes that number is way, much, much higher. When we had to do the rooftop units a couple of years ago, those those cost more than $6 million. And that's, all those dollars come from the general fund. So I wanted to just take a moment and kind of really highlight what the general fund supports expenditure-wise. Some, you know, some of these items can can rise just with a, you know, a decision. They're they're necessitated by not just, I guess, I shouldn't say necessitated, sometimes it's for the improvement of the city. Sometimes it's needs, such as like the church demolition from a couple of months ago, where the city had to cover that that demolition cost, which the last number I heard was 300 to 400,000 dollars. So those kinds of surprise things that that need to be addressed by the city are covered by the general fund. Next slide, please. And so the enterprise fund, I'll just keep this brief, the revenues across the bottom, revenues are tracking for the year. The golf fund is is having another great year. Everyone's been hearing about that, you know, golf golf is cool again. So that, you know, we're benefiting there. But I guess I'll make my other general fund kind of pitch there. In in the past, the golf has covered its operations, but it's generally needed help related to equipment and and capital projects. But it's doing, doing very well, so I shouldn't, shouldn't have said that because I I just tainted the golf thing. So next slide, please. And as always, just a reminder to the community that all these reports are online as long as, as well as tons of additional information in all the budget books that we post twice a year. And then with that, I'll take any questions or comments.
Questions or comments from members of the council of our finance director? If not, thank you very much for the report and the update, as always. At this point, our city manager does not have a report to share at this time. So that leaves us with council members. Is there comments, reports that the council members would like to share this evening? If not, that allows me extra time, so I will take that. I want to just simply say there was a busy weekend on on many, many fronts of all the things that go on in our city. But from the bison games to other entertainment, concerts. We had a 5K run on Saturday at the Shriner, sponsored for benefits to children's healthcare services. We had Indian Day celebration over at the Bloomington Public Library. We had the last farmer's market on Saturday for outdoors, and I was going to move indoors over to the arena. And then tomorrow is a day where we're going to see some of the old blend into what could be the future and the new in the front and center demolition that is going to take place tomorrow. So any members from council, anyone would would like to be in a safe area where we'll be to see that begin? Please, please join us. We'll look for a hard hat for you or something like that if you want to come. If not, any other comments or from members? Okay, if not, we take a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
Seconded.
Seconded by Member Danenberger. And is there a voice vote we could do? Okay. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Have a nice rest of your evening.